I'd like to lead into the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we could skip the introduction.
Yeah, and online tonight, we have Deb, Frank, Harley, and Keith. And I will let you know if anybody else tunes in. And for additions, there are no deletions, but the additions you can see in red on your agenda, the first addition is an executive session. And that is according to Chapter 1, VSA Subsection 313, to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. And that's at 8:00 PM, which theoretically will fall after all of the reports. The other addition, I figured under new business, there's been the update to the open meeting law, the emergency legislation, and I just wanted you all to have a chance to communicate about what you might want to do with that. And there's some additional interest, I guess, that falls under the interested applicants for the available positions, or just an update that I thought you might like to discuss. And I don't know if you're wanting to discuss the town-owned property preparation for sale tonight? I don't know if anything needs to be deleted, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I don't have anything new to bring in from.
Okay, we can move that.
Okay, that sounds good. So approval of the minutes? Everybody good with that?
They look fine to me. I'll move that we approved the minutes from last time.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Tom, favorite? All right. Coast, carried. Announcement?
I don't think I have any.
Reports?
Oh, there's a zoning, Jonas emailed that he had left this report in our here. The report. Oh, there you go. And then there's also, did you get? You get that? You do?
You can have one of those too, Kristen.
Thanks. Here, you can all have one of these. That looks, the one I just gave you, looks like it was just the warning, as well as the annual report.
Any discussion about Jonas's? Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Yep, we met last night. We spent most of the time working with two large maps, which Rutland Regional Planning Commission printed out for us, working on solar siting for the enhanced energy plan. So we went over and identified the spots that we think would be okay in our town for large-scale solar installations, and they're all in the industrial zoning district in West Polat on the border with New York. It's mostly on those old slate piles, which would be great places if someone wanted to put a lot of solar up. And most of the rest of the town is not great for anything large scale because it's nearly all either agricultural land or forested, or is a scenic vista. We want to create a map that shows where we do and don't want this solar to be, and then we're going to include language in the enhanced energy plan to that effect. Once we have these maps and this language, and we've adopted the enhanced energy plan, it should give us what's called substantial deference with the Public Utility Commission, should the town end up in a dispute with an energy developer who wants to build an installation where we don't think it would be appropriate. So this is ongoing work. We were working on this last year, but we've actually got to the looking at map stage, so that's good. We also discussed Ed Boeb is going to be leaving as Executive Director of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. He's stepping down sometime this summer. And so we talked about what that means for the two grants we have received, our municipal planning grant and our by-law modernization grant, both of which we were going to be working with him on. And in the report, I said I was going to be following up with him to see if he's going to keep on working with us. I did, and he got back to me today. He will continue working with the Town of Polat on both those grants.
Oh, that's great.
Yep. And he said that he's going to be staying on part-time even after he steps down as Executive Director. So he'll still be doing stuff with the Regional Planning Commission regarding bylaws and such and so, which is good because he knows his stuff. We now have a committee for the group that's going to be working on the municipal planning grant. I know at the last, at our last select board meeting, Mike, you said you would be on the committee. Besides you and me, Frank wants to be on it for the Planning Commission. And as a member from the community of West Polat, Rhonda Schleyman would like to be on it, and I think that would be great. And then also Ed Boeb. So we can put together the first meeting for that committee ASAP now that we've got everybody on it. The first thing we'll have to do is call for requests for proposals. There was a question about, which came up, about whether this committee, is it an officially-appointed committee of the select board that needs to have its meetings publicly warned or not? And I am trying to figure out if that's the case. I mean, is the committee, we have the committee, John, that's the one that's working on the,
The Polat one?
The scoping study. And that's not an official committee that has warned meetings? I don't know.
I would ask.
My, yeah, I could ask VLCT.
That's, you could email it and fill out.
My tendency would be to just warn the meeting, because it's not that hard to warn the meeting, but I guess that's also more work for Deb every time she has to warn a meeting.
And I think it kind of is, if it's an officially-appointed group, that means that it would then require, it would fall within the same requirements that an appointed committee or group has, which would mean warned public meetings. But that's just an educated guess, but I would just ask.
Yeah, I want to cross my t's and dot my i's.
Sure, that's great. Get a clarification on that.
Exactly.
The thing, I'm thinking that it's not going to have to be because they're not going to be allowed to make any decisions.
Yeah, I mean, the decisions that are going to be made would be to who? Who we're going to hire, basically.
But the only thing the committee's going to do is give suggestions to the board.
The committee is going to send out the request for proposals and then gather them and look at them. Yeah.
Do the clerical work, but when it comes to any decisions regarding the grant, it'll all be made here at the board.
All right, but yeah, I will, I will double-check on that.
Clarification will be great.
And I think that's, that's it for our Planning Commission report.
Frank has his hand raised when there's an opportunity.
Go ahead.
I have a question too. I just wondered, what's the definition of large-scale solar? Where is the?
Above 500 kilowatts. I think it's KW. Anyhow, it's above 500 of what the unit is that they measure with, kilowatts per hour, I think is.
And what does that translate into acres?
Oh, it would be, so the rooftop ones that people get are like 30 or 40.
Okay.
The ones that you might see, like on Lacking Child Farm or something, those ones might go as high as like 150 or 100 or something.
Okay.
But for it to be, for it to be around 500, that one that we were looking, the one for the Board of Civil Authority looked at. Yeah, it would be more like that size.
Okay.
Yeah.
About Blossoms Corners, is that the Blossoms Corners?
Yeah, like that size one.
That's about a 500, okay.
Yeah, I think so. That's my best guess, but yeah. So these would be sizable ones, and it wouldn't be one someone would put on their own land. It would definitely be one that a developer would come in and put up.
Any more questions for Planning Commission?
Frank?
Okay.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, Frank, go ahead.
I think the public meeting law says that any group that's part of the town in any way has to be warned meetings with a public comment period. But that's the thing that needs to be answered. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Road Foreman's report?
Keith, did you have anything?
Nothing, no. Everything's rolling well.
Good.
And then just to share an update, Julie and I got together today to begin the process of doing the closeout paperwork for the Better Back Roads Grant, which is the Herrick Brook Road project, as well as the paving grant, which is the Danby Polat Road. So we have mostly what we need, and so we're just going to, between Julie and Keith and I, we'll work together on getting all that done, and hopefully we'll have the bulk of it completed before town meeting.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah.
Anybody having questions for Keith? No, everything looks good, Keith, thank you. Is there anything from the assessors, John?
No, nothing new that I'm aware of. Lisa was in the office yesterday, but I didn't hear anything.
Town Clerk's memo. We have to approve the warning for the meeting, huh?
So, let's see. Deb is here. Deb, did you want to give your report? Oh, you're muted.
Okay. Yeah, so the warning is there with a few variations on page four, depending on your discussions and decisions tonight prior to signing the warning. On the first page, you might have noticed that I had put in the year 2021 in one section that's been corrected to 2022. There is a letter for you there from Diane Mack with regard to the petition that was generated through the Helping Hands. So that is up for your discussion. But anyway, there's four scenarios for you to consider tonight before you sign the warning. The signature page is by itself, so making any changes does not affect this signing of the document. There is a Board of Abatement meeting next Monday or Tuesday via Zoom. That is, many of you that can attend would be great because that's a forum, a forum of the board meeting and not just a forum of those present meeting. Town agent and grand juror are no longer elected offices, so they will not be on the ballot. I talked with Kristen today for you guys to vote on renewing the mask requirement because that's, the governor gave Towns the authority to do that every 30 days. So Kristen and I were talking today about perhaps doing an auto rollover until such time that you guys decide to eliminate the mask requirement. Kristen already addressed the next bullet point, and that's the emergency legislation for public meetings. For Bob, there is an overweight permit there that needs to be signed. And all of the ballots, or all of the consent forms have been received as of 5:00 yesterday, and all offices have one candidate per opening except for the library trustee, and there's three people running for two open seats. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
All right, well, thank you. Now we got to look at the warrant. Warning. Where is the warning?
I've got it right here.
You have it, okay.
So, so maybe first off, you should all take a look at the letter from Diane Mack about the Helping Hands.
The Helping Hands food program.
So I don't know how you want to.
So it was only the consent candidate that didn't need the signatures according to the COVID rules? I kind of breezed through them today, but they didn't, it all didn't stick together.
By the time Governor Scott signed the emergency legislation, the petitions for articles were already to have been handed in. I think it is up to the Select Board to, you made that decision earlier in the season. The Helping Hands program, a late start with trying to generate a petition, so they just ran into the COVID roadblocks and were only able to get 40 points, signatures of the 60 that were needed. The Helping Hands, I don't know if you are aware, is a food distribution program that occurs three times a week in the Town Polat, prepared, with meals prepared by Mack's general store for people in the community that call ahead and reserve a meal, no questions asked. It is funded primarily on contributions and donations, and I believe, from what I'm to understand, the program is running low on funds. And at the last minute, they were, it was decided to try to put in a petition, but it just ran out of time. So that's that.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, John.
Did, remind me again whether the petitions for articles was waived a few days after they were due?
No, the governor only signed into emergency legislation to waive the requirement for signatures on candidate nomination petitions. Yeah. And all those people had to do was submit, well, some people had already submitted their petitions with signatures. The governor only signed it into legislation last Wednesday or Thursday, and the petitions were due yesterday. So there, most people had already handed in their petitions with signatures. But it was too late, there was, there was no provision for the article appropriations.
The articles on the warning, other than candidates, were not covered by, that's what I'm looking for, right?
Right.
Right.
Right. That is a decision that's always been in the purview of the Select Board. Like several years ago, you all decided to, or the board at the time, voted to not require signatures for appropriations that have been approved three years in a row at the same amount. If the appropriation request was to be changed, then signatures had to be procured, except for anything under $500, and then no signatures, no petition was required at all. Just a letter of intent, or a letter of request to be on the ballot again.
So how does everybody feel about this? Yeah. Not quite 60 signatures renewed, 41 were gathered. Do we want to leave it on the ballot or not?
In the past, what was the amount?
I think this is something brand-new. This has never been on the ballot before, has it, for Helping Hands, or?
No, this is the first, the first time. It was a program that was started by some local residents in March of 2020 and has run on its own. Well, there's just been enough local donations from businesses and people that has kept the program going. And then there was just the fear that the program was starting to run low on funds. And the need, the need, as we got deeper into the pandemic, the need and food insecurities increased. And yeah, and the food still has to be paid for.
I mean, it's certainly a good cause, and I know that, I know that Mack's Market does a lot of work with this.
Deb, is this the same as the Everyone Eats program? Do you know?
No.
Different?
No. The Helping Hands is strictly within this community. The meals are provided from Mack's Market. They're delivered, they're picked up in the parking lot at the church, and it's funded by donations locally, and it's provided to mostly not just Polat and West Polat, but in the communities surrounding. It's available to anyone who needs any food, if they call ahead. They just have to call the day before so that the food can be prepared for them.
So I have a question. How do you qualify for this?
There is no, for getting the food?
Yeah. Is there any?
You don't have to qualify.
So it's, so it's for anybody?
Anybody who is experiencing food insecurities or like if you're, during a period of time with pandemic, I think people got laid off for a spell and found that they needed that little extra help. And so they utilized the program for a few weeks and then got their, their income back from their jobs and found that they didn't need it. It's, it's driven mostly by food insecurities, but there's no questions asked.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion one way or the other, whether we put it on or not? Right now, as it stands, it doesn't have enough votes, so it won't make it. It doesn't have enough signatures, so it won't make it on the ballot unless we have to decide to put it on the ballot. So.
You can make any changes to the, to the warning that you see there.
Right.
This did not qualify based on signatures alone, and Diane's letter is appealing to the board to allow it to be on the ballot.
Okay, so somebody asked to either make a motion yes or no?
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the motion, Deb, I don't know how you want it, but my understanding was that maybe the motion to approve the ultimate warning would include whether or not you wanted that.
Right, but I just figured it'd be easier to do it one at a time.
Sure.
And then we'll, we'll decide on these two, and then we'll decide on the warning based on what we decide on these two.
Right.
So.
Well, I think.
Mike?
Yes?
Mike?
Yes.
Can I ask how much they're asking for?
$10,000.
I think it's a worthy cause. I just hate to set a precedent that we loathe the signatures. So it's a double-edged sword.
I mean, I don't think it would be that bad of a precedent because this year is COVID. I mean, I don't think that we would accept it in a regular year if there wasn't the situation where Omicron came up right when everyone was trying to get signatures and it was real hard to go door-to-door. I mean, I wish the governor and the legislature had got their act together quicker if they were going to start to waive signatures, because, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I sure went and got my signatures. I know you got yours, Mike, and John got his, and then all of a sudden, we didn't need them. But, well, I'm willing to make a motion that we, that we do put this on the ballot, even though they only had 2/3 of the signatures that they needed.
Considering, considering the events of the year?
Yeah, considering, which is what Diane addresses here, considering the.
The COVID increase.
Extenuating circumstances, even though we're not technically in an emergency anymore. Yeah.
But I like, I like that, being in that motion so that we can fall back on that saying, this is the reason we made that motion this year, you know, if somebody challenges us five years from now or something.
Exactly.
So.
I mean, hopefully at this time next year, we won't all be wearing masks and having to, you know, yeah.
Does somebody want to second that motion? So if I don't hear a second on that motion, then, then it will.
It would be about a half of a cent added to your tax rate if it's approved, for whatever that's worth.
So if I don't hear a second on the motion, it does be included, then, then I guess that means that it will not be included on the ballot, so. Okay. No, on the Helping Hands. Okay, the statue. John, you were going to do a little bit more research on the statue. Do you have anything?
I wonder whether we can delay, one of the, I did deal with the VL, I took the liberty as I emailed you today to continue my interest in this article about whether it's appropriate or not. And I did have a, a email conversation with the VLCT lawyer, Garrett.
Garrett Baxter, yeah.
Baxter. And my concern, and I also, this was Friday, and I also emailed Merrill. She got back to me yesterday, said she'd get back to me today, now whether she is going to deliver while we're in executive.
So we can address that when we go into deliberative assessment?
I wonder whether we can delay this until.
Okay, yeah. Anybody have any problem with that?
I don't.
Okay.
I did also have, I was contacted by some, by some folks who were concerned about the language of that, of that particular item, and were wondering if, if it was approved, what exactly that would mean, right? Would that mean that then the Select Board had to support a particular monument by a particular artist, or that the Select Board just had to support a general idea of a monument? They were, they were wondering what the specifics were. So I think that's.
Okay, so this is what I learned a little bit ago when I talked to Garrett, that the townspeople can instruct you to establish a monument for members of your community that have been in certain.
That's in the statute, right? I remember looking at that.
Okay, but this particular expedition was before this town was formed, so it really doesn't qualify. Because the town had to be formed first to honor the members of the town that were in this expedition. But these, this expedition. But these, this expedition was before this town was formed.
When, when was Polit founded?
71.
Yeah, I feel like you're, you're the historian here, John.
1791 was when Vermont became a, I should know that, if there's anything-
Now, I opened a can of worms, I'm sorry.
No, I, I thought of that briefly and did not get that.
Not sure, I wasn't there.
Hold on.
Oh, we may have done one of these points.
Don't worry, I got the internet on my fingertips.
See who's faster, John looking at the plaque or Kristen looking at Google?
Dun, 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 1761.
Ah.
August 26th.
Yes.
Confirmed.
And when was that expedition?
That was in 17, it was in the Revolutionary War, so technically Polit would have existed then, just-
1777.
1777, according to the plaque?
No, then, no, we are, we-
That was when the 1761-
Expedition?
So there might have been Polit folks.
So they could have been-
They could have been.
Members of the community involved in it?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was-
I can read a couple paragraphs of Garrett's response, if you want them now, or wait till we have Merrill's input?
We might as well do them right now. We have a little bit of time before.
Okay. "The question of whether to direct a legislative body to write a letter of support for the placement of a monument is not clear, right, which is within the province of the voters to grant or refuse their vote at town meeting. Legislature has given the voters the authority to instruct their local legislative bodies under 24 VSA 3901 to erect a building or monument, as was mentioned, in the memory of citizens of such town who were in the military or naval service during any wars in which the United States has been engaged, but not to compel them to draft a letter of support. Accordingly, the Select Board could treat the requested article as advisory or reject it outright. In addition to lacking this authority, the article you pointed out likely violates the state law against improper influence, though that, I would offer, would not be grounds to deny those other portions of the petitioned article if they were otherwise lawful." In other words, three out of the five sentences of the article are my words, promotional. And that is inappropriate. Specifically on that point, the law provides that either the warning, the notice, or the official voter information courts, nor the ballot itself shall include any opinion or comment by any town body or officer or other person on that matter to be voted on. That was one of my concerns last meeting. Then it says, "I suggest directing the lead petitioner to contact the Secretary of State's office lawyer, Jenny Prozer." So it gave, gave us the power to make that decision, even though it was duly submitted with correct amount of signatures at the correct time.
Okay, so now we'll talk to Merrill. Actually, we probably need to talk to Merrill after we come out of executive session, so that that's public.
So we can't really totally prove this?
We're not going to vote on this right now.
And Deb has a hand raised.
Go ahead, Deb.
Thank you. I just want to stress that this, the warning has to be approved and signed because this week is the last, the last day that I have to post it. So this, whatever you decide, I, it doesn't, one way or the other, but it cannot be tabled for the next meeting. That's what I guess I'm trying to say.
Okay, we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, mask requirement. Does somebody want to make a motion that we, we have a renewal every 30 days until we say no on auto renewal on the mask requirement?
So yeah, basically, just to summarize that, right now, it's, the idea is that the Select Boards would make a motion every 30 days to renew a mask mandate. And in conversation with Deb, in an effort for all of us to stay a little bit more organized, my thought was that it could just be the motion to renew it, because it's been 30 days since the last, with the concept of just having a standing auto renewal until the legis, you know, everything changes, and then you'll be able to remove the building mask mandate, instead of me trying to, or Deb trying to remember every 30 days to get it on the agenda to do it again. So that was just the thought. But as it stands now, it's the recommendation that the Boards renew a motion every 30 days.
I'll make a motion that we renew the mask mandate until we choose to remove it.
Great.
With the auto renewal option, okay.
Say auto renewing every 30 days until such time that it can be lifted, and then-
At any point in time that we choose to remove it.
Right.
Did I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Which then goes into the next topic, which is that at this point in time, there's emergency legislation, legislation waiving the requirement of a public meeting location. So this was initiated, my understanding, because of town meeting, and just the understanding that town meeting draws a large number of people, and that it just, out of, you know, safety and the opportunity to be able to effectively and smoothly do a virtual, you know, hybrid thing is really difficult to do. So at this point in time, it's, in general, there's no requirement to have a physical meeting location. So what that means, it would be like the early days when you don't have to say that its location is the Town Hall, and it would just be exclusively Zoom. Now, that emergency legislation could change, you know, at any point, and there could be the return. And just the only thing to consider is that if the Board chooses to go that way, there's no physical meeting location, and so nobody would show up. But if there is a physical meeting location, it just stands to say that anybody could come. So when, as soon as you put a place and time where you will all potentially be, or even two of you might potentially be, it always just opens the door to have anybody be able to come, so. You don't have to do anything about that, but it's just something to consider that-
Now, we, we voted that way pending the Governors-
We voted for the town meeting to be that way. I think Kristen is saying that-
These, these meetings right here, okay.
It would be virtual if we wanted them to.
Okay, we can make them virtual, but we would all have to stay-
Right, you could make them ver-
We couldn't, we couldn't do a meeting like we're doing right now tonight.
Right, like this is fun, you know, or this is-
But it's open.
But it's open, so technically, any, everybody, anybody and everybody could come.
Could walk through the door and sit down.
Right, just as, just as we have been. It's great. I just heard feedback from Harley, who's here virtually, is saying that the Owl option, the Owl experience is working out really nicely, which is great. So, not something you have to decide on tonight, but it's just something that you should all be aware-
It's an option.
That it is an option, should you want, we could go back for however long that the Legislature says so, to just meeting exclusively via Zoom, just like we did in the early days of, of 2020.
And the town meeting is offset, so we're all good with everything on Deb's, except we got to sign the warning. Okay. Treasurer's memo. Did Julie join us tonight, or?
Julie is not here tonight, but-
And, and we talked and voted and approved last meetings, but never signed it?
Yes. So there are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period would, was $8,851.16. Accounts payable was $35,917.03. General fund money is $11,638.07. Highway is $28,230.12, and wastewater is 4,900 even. We have received the quarterly highway class 2 and 3 state aid payment for $24,619.96, and the quarterly highway supplement of $2,072,487. There will need to be a transfer from wastewater savings to cover these and other upcoming expenses. The next collection date is 3/10/22. This will leave approximately $10,000 in the savings account. Please address the A1 bills for new pumps. And the motions are, that Julie will need are stated.
A1 pumps. So A1 sent us a bill for the one they replaced, and then they sent us a bill for one from a year ago. And Jill, Jill is not 100%. According to her documents, she doesn't see anywhere where she noted in her sheets that she changed that.
So she thinks the one from a year ago, they didn't actually do? Is that what she-
Yeah, that's what she's thinking, so I will, uh-
Well, then, let's not pay it if she, they didn't do it.
Right, well, I'm going to call A1 and try and get to the bottom of it, and see if, see if I can be satisfied with their, with their response.
On the second page, there's usually a-
That's 16.
Yeah, oh.
There's two invoices for pumps.
Mitch, did you miss this one also? I, I just missed this one. Here, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
Oh, there's three of them.
Yeah, there's three of them, I guess. Give you, you a workout tonight.
Yeah, I guess so. Buying an extra- The process. Do we know we even got the pump? Isn't that what's in question?
Yeah, that's what we don't know, so. I'll call them, I'll get to it tomorrow, towards the end of the week, but- So the warrants, does anybody want to make a motion to pay the warrants for this week?
I'll make the motion.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay, Bob made a motion. Anyone want to second it?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
He signed these ones? Yeah, good.
Now, where's the, this was last meeting's warrant.
And this one, this one's coming out?
Oh, it's still coming out, okay.
So everything's good with the town treasurer?
Is there anything that I should be making note of about the A1?
That I'm going to call-
Okay.
This week. More, we have a meeting down at the sewer plant at noon-
Yeah.
To see if, see what we can come up with for funding to do some. This guy has worked for a big company that does a whole bunch of funding.
You guys?
Yeah, Mike, me, Jill, and this consultant.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't have to do anything?
No.
Right, now, I, I put out a message earlier to ask if anybody else wanted to join, and nobody wanted to join, so.
Well, you know, just have to just tell us how it is.
We'll see what, see what he wants to offer for us for funding and stuff. And Jill knows him, he's, he has a long career in sewage treatment, engineer and stuff too. I think he kind of- Where did he show him or something, I think? Somewhere up that way, it's where the- It, it looks like a really big company that he works for, from what I, I looked on the, some of the credentials that he passed along. But they apparently, they started out in Boston area or something like that, finding, finding funding to do these, these projects and stuff, so. Seems like they're just kind of branching out, and it's not so much they do, do the design work, but they, they find the funding, and they have the insight on that, so. We're going to see what he, what he can do for us. And Jill knows him from past engineering jobs and stuff, that he has a lot of background in sewage treatment and stuff like that, so it'll be a benefit. We'll find out, we'll have more to bring back at the next meeting of how we can, how we can rake in some bucks to get that, do any kind of upgrades that we can do to help work on the user fee. Is there any emergency management report? Nothing, okay.
I haven't, has any, I haven't heard from Bob Marleau. Has anybody?
Pretty quiet?
Yeah, well, we usually receive a report for the first meeting of the month, but I hadn't, so I'll check in with him. But I think Jennifer shared with us her updates at the last meeting, so.
Okay, so.
No reports there.
We still got nine minutes, so I'm thinking that we could scoot right on to some older unfinished business. The town, the town home property, we don't have any more-
Yeah, we're just waiting for the surveyor at the moment.
Right, okay.
Now, in older unfinished business, technically, the library steps would fit under that, wouldn't that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so I, because the library had contacted us last time with their concerns from the library board, I sent out just today an email, included Bob, did you get that one, Bob?
I did not see it.
Okay, well, I included you and also the two people who written to us, which was Lindsay Barnes, the director of the library, and also Diane Mack, who had been the ones who wrote to us, and, and just, you know, reiterated what we had said as a Board in the past about the steps, which was that we were hoping to, in the next year, go back through that process, right, to get some bids and to see what we could do.
Come up with a reasonable solution, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. And, and then I asked if, what, about, because they'd also mentioned the snow and ice, so I asked her if what they wanted was to put up those snow guards. And she said, "Well, it's complicated, so I'd rather just meet with you to talk about it." So Bob, she'd like to meet with the two of us at some point, so I'll try to set up a time. When are you generally available?
9 o'clock to 3.
Okay.
At night?
9, 9:00 PM.
So 3:00 AM. Because she'd probably want to do it sometime when the library's open.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll get with her about that. But she, she mentioned that she hoped that we-
Take a handy, huh?
She mentioned that she hoped that we could, that we could- She mentioned that she hoped that we could, that we could start the process of looking for the bids fairly soon, so that because of how contractors are being booked out pretty far in advance these days, and that we'd wanna do the work, obviously, once the weather would be good for it. So, I don't know how we wanna go about the process of looking for these bids, because I know that you told me last time the bids were too high. So, maybe we don't wanna ask those same people. Do we wanna ask different people? Wanna go further afield?
Do you have a design, a specific...
Yeah, that's the thing. We... There was options that came up, and until we have a locked-in option of what we need to do so that everybody can bid fairly...
Yeah.
And we talked to... We talked to Ralph, didn't we? Didn't Ralph help work with that? So...
Ralph Nimitz.
Maybe we could get some... I think he had prepared some...
Yeah, do we still have any of those materials?
I don't know. Ed was part of that deal, so I don't... I would suspect...
Yeah.
I would suspect that we may end up needing to contact Ralph and see if he has some of that in his files.
Thank you.
And I know that the library, I would be surprised if they didn't have... There might be some plans somewhere in the library, but I will check the filing cabinet too to see, because there was a lot. Actually, might be able to check Ed's mailbox over there that still is full.
It's still...
Arounds everything. So, I might be able to look through that and see what I can find, so...
I have a question about the town property. Is everybody... How does everybody feel about putting that up for auction like we did the town truck before I move too much further forward with that?
What, on that online auction site?
It seems, it really got like a lot more for that truck than I ever imagined we were gonna get, so...
And whatever you all think, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I just don't wanna start the process.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I'm thinking is that we know that there's at least a couple people interested who were contacting you in the past, right, and saying when it's gonna be...
There's lots of people interested.
Yeah, there are a lot of people interested in it.
Well, if we put it on the website and then everybody, and just made sure that these folks who we know are interested all know it's on the website, they could bid for it there.
That they could just bid on this online auction, just like...
Yeah, they'd be better off because they'd be able to continue to bid. The problem with closed bids is you might be willing to go another hundred bucks, but you don't know that you need to.
Right, right.
You know, that online thing, if you feel like you wanna go another hundred bucks or fifty bucks, you can. If somebody wants to match it, they can and...
Because alternatively, is it an in-person situation, like in the past?
It could be closed bids too. I think there's several options.
Just thinking it might be a little bit more comfortable and convenient for people to do it. I mean, not for everybody, but for some people to do it online.
No, as long as it's fair and we're giving everyone an opportunity in town and...
Everybody that's been interested can have the website to bid on, to go on this auction service and...
And all the details will be there.
Yeah, that seems to make sense.
I think those few people that did expect an interest could be directed at what we're up to. I think we can get an accurate...
And I think you have everyone's email, right? Didn't you make a little file that you were... Not really, but we talked about it, right?
I haven't. They're in the email.
You could search your history.
I could search my email. There was one person that was fairly consistent and I think there were... I think there were only, yeah. I think there were maybe only like two or three people that ultimately emailed, but they were just...
Two or three people that expressed interest to the town.
Were just persistent.
There was somebody from D M B. There was Ricky Bro.
There was another person that's not local.
And there's the neighbors.
The Brannigan kid. He's living downstate New York, but he...
Right, somebody that's not local, but would like to be...
Well, his father owns a house next door.
Next door, yeah, so...
We have a handful of names that are at the office with people that have called and expressed interest.
Yeah, so... There's, because my, the only reason I was thinking when you first said that, because there's, is there a traditional way that, or like a policy that needs to be followed in terms of that sort of a...
I don't know.
Thing, or I just wasn't sure.
I don't think it needs to be warned and advertised.
Right, yeah. So, seems like online is the way. And plus, you're so impulsive when you're just clicking, you know?
Yeah, the problem is we can only keep what we got in it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true. You're not trying to drive a big...
And we can't keep any of the monies that cost us to kick the people out either.
Merrill is coming in here.
Merrill's coming on?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll switch modes.
Okay. Hi, Merrill.
Do we need a motion to enter executive session?
Yes, we do. How long have you got? I mean, we...
So, the, there...
Okay.
I think PEG TV is supposed to not stick around for more than like a half an hour.
Half an hour? Okay.
Thirty minutes, so...
And you all have the reason, so when you make your motion for executive session, it's, the type of executive session is written?
Yep. All right, well, if it's time to do that, I guess I will go ahead and make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the select board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're at executive session. So, the next thing is the article. We had some more discussion with Merrill about the article and how do we wanna go with article number, or the statute article, which is...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-two. Right, thirty-two?
Thirty-three. Well, that's, right now, it's thirty-two.
Right now, it's thirty-two. Okay, because there's no helping hands. So, does anybody have a direction that we wanna go with that article after the guidance that we've had from legal sources?
I'll make a motion that we present that article under a non-binding... Best way to word it, non-binding.
Then we can work with Merrill, right, on the wording?
Present it to the voters, but yet it's non-binding to the select board.
Do you wanna shoot her? Do you want me to see if I can text her real quick and see if she'll come back for a minute? Because we'd like to have this article, but non-binding.
Okay, but yeah, the only thing that needs to happen is, or if that wants to be written and it just needs to be sent to Deb so that she can publish it tomorrow.
I think it would be the wording on how that would be put in the...
Yeah, so the wording...
Actual...
So, I'm not sure that the wording needs to be reflected in the minutes per se.
As long as Deb has it by tomorrow.
As long as the motion is made of what your intentions are for it and that Deb has it to be able to publish...
Okay.
Tomorrow. I don't know. Deb, are you here?
Yes, I am.
So, what is it that if the board is interested in making adjustments to the language on the draft article thirty-three, is that something that you need to have reflected in the minutes, what that language is? Or do you, are you okay with the board making a motion to have that article with edited language and then just getting the language in your email?
I think it's perfectly fine for them to follow up with Merrill without making a motion tonight. The warning will speak for itself when it's posted, and I think that the board should be prepared to field questions that come up from the person who generated the petition.
Okay. So, there you go. So, at this, so is, so in understanding, at this point, the board just needs to make a motion to approve the, whatever version of the warning, and then the language must be sent to you tomorrow?
Yes, as long as I have it tomorrow, because between tomorrow and Thursday, a lot of stuff happens with posting and ballots getting ordered and meeting the deadline. So, yeah, I'm okay with them making the motion pending the wording provided by town council. Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess probably the easiest thing would be, can you send Merrill that quick question, how to word that, so that that's a non-binding? Can you send a quick email to her? Kristen, or do you want me to?
I can do it right now.
Okay, just ask her.
We haven't voted on this yet.
No.
Oh, okay, right, right.
And I'd like to...
I'm jumping the gun.
I'm not in favor of this motion, because I feel it's a sloppy, inappropriate article to put on our town warning. And I just think it's, it just doesn't fit with the requirements, or what I consider are the manner in which an article should be presented.
Okay.
Because next year, we can have somebody requesting they wanna know a statue of an Avenger on the town green. And any other articles that has promotional, a lot of promotional verbiage in it, I think is inappropriate. And so, I'll be voting against this motion. All respect.
Okay, so now, we have, we... So, maybe we, Bob has made a motion already, but we have options. We can totally vote it out, or we can make it non-binding, or... It doesn't sound like it's very easy to adjust it. So, I think those would be the two options, really. Does anybody have any other option?
Didn't we discuss changing the wording a little bit with Merrill to make it less promotional?
Yeah, and that was a little bit, that was kinda gray from what I gathered is, because if you change the wording, then it's different from what all the people signed to put it on, and then it could alter the intent of...
So, the other option is to put it on the way it is, make it non-binding, and see what the voters have to say?
Right. Or not put it on at all?
Or exclude it, is the third one.
Or deem it, yeah, deem it inappropriate presentation and not put it on.
I'm curious what the voters have to say, so I'd second your motion if that's...
That's on the table right now.
And the motion that's on the table is to place article thirty-three in the draft information town meeting warning on the ballot with edited language.
Right, so that it's not, so that it's non-binding.
You also, I think the number of the article changes now that Helping Hands is out there.
Okay. So, article thirty-two.
With no Helping Hands, it puts it to thirty-two.
Yeah.
So, with edited language to ensure it is non-binding, is what...
Yeah, I think it would just be probably a little line before it saying this item is non-binding. But we have to double-check from... Yeah, I think Merrill said something about it would be a non-binding advisory article.
So, it was moved by Bob and seconded by Rich.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? John has made his discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me?
John. Okay, so three to one. It has to go on as a non-binding article.
Mike, can I ask another question?
Yes, please do.
Is this, is this still pending a change in the wording as suggested by Merrill?
We just have to make sure that the wording for it to be non-binding is correct, and we should be able to get that from her tomorrow.
Okay.
Can I...
We could still sign, we can still sign it, right? And then you can just...
I think one of the issues, too, not to interrupt, but was just the capital letters. You know, taking those and making them lowercase, I heard that come up several times as an issue.
But that isn't, I don't think the whole process of getting an article on the town warning has to be coming from the voters and not go through a sieve of the select board preferences, because that can change whether it's promotional or not.
By just tweaking a few of the words or something, we can put our spin on it, actually, huh?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and go against what the petitioners thought they were signing.
So, you're saying...
That's the basis I'm coming from.
So, for integrity's sake, we shouldn't change it at all. We should either say yes or no, and we've said yes, so we should just leave it be.
Exactly the way it was presented.
Yes, and except for the non-binding.
Right. Okay, right, that's, so we don't, we don't put our spin on anything the way it was presented. And we let the voters decide.
Makes sense. Right, because that's what they were signing.
If it's deemed appropriate enough to put on the ballot.
Now, maybe they were signing it because they thought it was binding. I don't know.
Well, but that, yeah, that's a little bit more in our purview. We do have that authority, so I think, I don't know. This is pretty uncharted territory. I mean, I've got nine years...
Well, one of the first times that I went to a select board meeting, I think it was over the Metta Lee School, so it's been since then, there was an article about allowing certain identities of teachers, and I said I was ashamed to be in Pollack because of that. And I said, "What's next?" And I went through a variety of identities, gun owners, non-gun owners, people of different religion or whatever. And people said, "Oh, this came from Montpelier." Well, it was an advocacy group that put that on.
Ah, yeah.
And it came from an advocacy group in Montpelier, not the state.
Right, not the state.
And so, then we got into a discussion about how articles got presented. I don't know if you were on the board then, Bob, or not, but...
Sure was.
I thought it was inappropriate and did not make Pollack in a good light, so...
Very interesting. Thank you. Okay, so I guess that...
Mike, I just have a question. So, I'm drafting an email to Merrill, and I was going to include you and Deb on it, so you could both be in the loop. Is Merrill familiar with the wording as it's...
Yes.
So, I don't need to type it out to her.
No.
I'm just asking her...
We discussed it with her in executive session, how to properly handle this.
Okay, so I'm writing, "Per the board's request, may you please advise on how to present the article for our town meeting ballot, or town meeting warning in a non-binding format?"
Right. The statute article.
Okay. Okay.
So, now, we're, older unfinished business, was that pretty well finished before we chose to move on?
Yeah, we discussed the town-owned property and we discussed the library steps.
And then, did you make a motion to sign?
The warning?
The warning?
No, we didn't, but we will. Somebody wanna make a motion to sign the warning as edited, I guess?
Sure, I will move that we sign the warning.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Oh, I better do a nice signature. Mine is so messy.
That's all right.
I just have to sign so many things, I just...
Oh, I see it left-handed.
Beautiful. Wait, who was the second on that? I missed it.
My wife, Maddie's left-handed now. This is a Cal broker, right hand.
Oh, my God.
I can't even hold hands now. One's got to be facing north, and one's facing south.
One, you stand behind the other one.
Oh, gee.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, Frank, what do you? What's the planning?
The older unfinished business is done. New business, interested DRB, PPC?
Okay, um, so that?
I disappeared it, right, there.
Um, okay, so for new, that was new business. So interested applicants, so, um, Hart, you have seen this, this was a couple weeks ago now. So Harley Cudney has expressed interest in the planning commission vacancy.
And nobody else cares, right?
And-
Have you heard of anybody else?
I have not heard of anyone else, no.
Do we want to make a motion to, to nominate Harley to the planning commission?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to nominate Harley Cudney to the open seat on the planning commission.
Bob seconds it? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Congrats, Harley.
Congratulations, Harley. Is he still there?
No.
No, he went to bed.
Will you communicate with him?
I will, yes.
He went to bed.
He'll be there anyhow.
Actually, no, Harley's here.
Yes.
Harley, congratulations.
Yeah, we'll see you at the February meeting, sitting at the table.
Woohoo! Here he is. Thank you, Harley.
That and a dollar or something.
Thank you.
Get a cup of coffee at McDonald's.
Yep.
Okay.
And the next one was-
Hold on, my fingers are moving as fast as they can.
You know who's crazy? You know Josh Glassby, right?
I don't.
You don't? He ran that little computer place in Bramble Bay.
Okay. Yeah, 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 right, at the intersection, yeah.
He signed my name.
I just call myself. I just can't, and I don't even want to.
He's an IT guy, isn't he?
He's an IT guy. He's freaking awesome.
The next one is James Glick has had a change in his winter schedule and so is interested in returning as an alternate for the DRB. So that's that. I don't know.
Somebody want to make a motion on that one?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. John and Bob? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, James.
Yep, um-
We had to beat him into it, didn't we? And he beat himself at it.
I think that was more like it, actually.
The poor guy wiped out, he works at Bromley and he wiped out on a snowmobile, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he pounded the hell out of him.
Big time, yeah. Just recently?
Just before Christmas, right? The day before Christmas or something?
Christmas Day.
Up on the mountain on Bromley on the sled.
Bad, bad, bad. The next one is Lucy Norman has expressed interest for the DRB administrative role. This is something that I think that the board maybe needs to wrap their arms around because this is a paid position. So there needs to be some figuring on what that looks like and, um, what the rate is and so on and so forth. But Lucy is interested in that role and has submitted that letter of interest. Has also been in touch with definitely John Weiss, also potentially Keith. I'm not totally sure. Um, but so that is something that-
The only thing we need to do is come up if there's a, a calculated-
Yeah.
Number.
So we can, I can, um, maybe talk with Keith and with Julie to figure out maybe what is in the budget for that and what an amount might be.
Did anybody try and sell her on being your planning commission clerk?
I haven't, but-
Are you in need of one?
We are. I mean, it would just be an additional couple hours a month. And I, I know there's money in the budget for the planning commission clerk because we, I, because I remember I said, well, we might as well take it out. And then you said, no, don't take it out, we might find somebody.
We hope somebody will come.
So there, there is but money budgeted for that.
Okay. So that is action item for us to work on.
Yes.
Okay, so if we can work on that to come up with, we certainly, we certainly want to take her up on the offer. We just need to know the details of what we can, what we can give.
Yeah. Harley is curious when the appointment expires.
He filled a vacancy, doesn't he, at Tom's?
It's Tom, yeah, it's Tom's vacancy.
It's March twenty, twenty-three, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm pretty certain it's through March twenty-twenty-three.
So he's got like one meeting under the belt before he gets reappointed?
No, this is twenty-twenty-two.
A year.
A year.
A year from now.
Flying by.
Um-
Too fast as it is. I, I certainly don't want-
Yours flying by.
Right.
Um, yeah. So to be continued, next meeting.
Is there anything else that we-
Then just the emergency legislation, which you already talked about briefly. And, I think, oh, the only other thing is, which Deb just left, um, but Sean Ruck had contacted me wondering if the board wanted any information to go out in the newsletter about town meeting. And he was hoping to get it out tomorrow. But I advised that he contact Deb as she does all of the warnings and whatnot for that.
Something should go in it, but I think-
Yeah, so-
Virtual and stuff like that.
Just the warning and the information about it, I would imagine, so. Okay, but other than that.
Um, do you mind just going through our action items, Kristen?
Yeah, so all that I have would be for myself and you, Jessica, and Keith, and Julie will figure out information about, um, that paid position that Lucy Norman is interested in and finding out some numbers for that. And getting more information, I guess, about the town-owned property when that comes up and starting to continue to move forward with that. And then you two get to meet with the library.
Right, was there, was someone looking up the stuff from the past about the library?
Yeah. That someone is me.
Okay.
Yep, and Bob and I are meeting, are going to meet with, with Lindsay about the-
Yeah, I saw that email.
Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, I think-
I gotta talk to A-one about the bill.
A-one about the bill?
Yep.
Um, and I would like to, I've, um, I would like to start to gather more information about figuring out the screen and the computer. That's something that I'm going to be working on and I'll let everybody know about numbers. And I think I've recruited John Weiss to, he said he's super into all that stuff. So I've, I've asked if, I was like, if you're super into it, you want to be super into helping us pick something out? So at the very least, helping us to maybe pick out what might work. Because I haven't had any luck with our IT-
Yeah.
Person. Um, and he also said that he would be in the market of being able to help us get it all set up and installed, too.
Okay.
Which would be cool.
That would be great.
So.
I forget, once, yeah, I can, I can, uh, I can pick our brain of our computer guy, too.
Yeah. Basically, we just want-
To make it all come together.
Yeah, just looking for the screen and then a computer, so I don't have to use mine.
It seems, he may have, he may have sent me that information once. I can, I can kick it back to you. So John can review it again or something.
Yeah, just to get a separate-
He certainly would give me any input that we, that we could need. So basically, just get a big flat-screen TV and that's what they got all over at, at work.
Yeah. Pretty much just finding somebody to tell us the right thing and then ha, also having somebody who can install it.
Yeah, just stick it up there.
Because that person is not me.
Stuff that, that would certainly be very handy.
Cool.
All right.
All righty.
We want to go home?
Anybody, public comment? Anybody have anything to say?
All right, great. Thank you very much for coming. Have a good night.
I'll move we turn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.